But he got severance, um, he got severance and I said to him.
Okay.
Hello, Joe, you must be out there.
Yeah, I'm here, Gene, Jamal.
I can count on it, right?
Count on it. There are other people here tonight, but they're all muted. I'm going back to mute.
Okay.
By yourself.
All along.
Hey Keith, how are you feeling?
I'm doing good, very good, actually. Thank you. Karen made it over there today. And she, do you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
She said she had the same commentary. She said it was run better than anything she's ever attended. She said she was in and out. Everybody was so helpful, directional, the whole thing. It was great.
Yeah, same here, Deb.
Feeling okay tonight?
So far, so good.
That's what I want to hear.
Yeah, I call you around four in the morning when I'm struggling. Hopefully it won't be any, hopefully it won't be any issues.
Good, fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Well, I'm two or three weeks beyond and I haven't had any problem. No illness, no, no aches or pains. Worked out good.
I heard the second one is the one that gets you.
That's what, yes, I've heard that.
Yeah, we've had a couple of offices that had some pretty good side effects from it. But they all get through it. They're all happy. They got the shot. So I just had my second one today, Mark, so I'll let you know in the morning.
Yeah, I had my first last week and it didn't bother me at all, so.
Yeah. I had very minor symptoms with the first. We'll see.
Chief, are you counting the days?
Um, I'm not in a big hurry, but yeah, it's like I said, it's gonna be bittersweet, you know. But I, I'm excited about the future. That's, that was my biggest hurdle is making sure we have the right person, you know. So I'm excited about it's, you, you know, I'll, I'll get into it a little bit more when, when we get to that point, but I'm excited about the future.
No, that's great.
Yeah.
Okay, we got 6:30 here. Okay, I'll open the joint meeting of the Board of Select, we have Board of Selectmen and Board of Health Thursday, February 18th. It is 6:30 and as you, all selectmen are in attendance, so. Let's start off with Deb and get an update on the, on COVID.
Okay. Well, we have good news for our own community numbers. For the last two weeks, we, we came out of the red last week. And not only did we come out of the red, we, we went into the gray, which is the lowest level you can possibly have. So last week, our, our numbers were, we had 614 people tested within that two-week period and 10 tested positive. This week, the data that just came out tonight is from January 31st to February 13th. And we had, again, 610 people tested and eight people tested positive. So we remain, again, in the gray with a percentage rate is down, it's 1.31%. So anything under 5% is, for the state, is great. So we're, we're in really good shape right now. It's also interesting to note every single community this week, Chelsea Lynn, Marblehead, Revere, and Swamp Scott. All of the communities that surround us have also all come down in numbers. I mean, there's three of them that you can, are still in the red, but their numbers are coming down. So the trend line now across the state is starting to look much better. So that's, that's good to see. And we have, the Jesmond is in great shape and the school is in great shape right now. So that's probably the best report I've been able to have in the last few months, so happy to share it with everyone.
Excellent.
That's great news. And as Jean was saying earlier, that the Vaccine Center seems to be going really well.
So there's, there's two vaccine clinics going on, is the, the big clinic at Lynn Tech for all the people that are eligible. And today, as you know, it opened up to the second set with just 65-year-olds. And then the Public Health Nurses, myself, working with the Lynn Public Health Nurses, we're doing clinics. Today, we were at the Breed Junior High School in Lynn, and that was for, what, what happened?
I'm just showing as you talk, I'm just showing this on the screen.
So the first responders from Lynn and Nahat after today's clinic should be all set. So we've been doing, you know, we did all the healthcare workers, so we're working in that, adjacent to the Lynn, the Lynn Community Health Center. So we're able to reach, you know, more people that way.
Great. And the, as Tony put up, the hotline and volunteer staffers on that have been doing a great job, I think, and really helping a lot of people. I've heard so many positive things about that, so I think that's great. Tony, it was a great move. And thank you all for the volunteers. We're helping with that.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to throw these numbers up, you know, I think that for us, it's been an extreme success. The call center's been working out really well because our staff is constantly looking at appointments as they become available. Whereas, you know, many residents aren't doing that, so if there isn't an appointment available when you call us, we take your information down. And then we call you when we see appointments, so, you know, but still, there's, there's a gap there where we only, we only know to call you if you call us and give you, you give us your contact info. So if you are watching from home today, if you're on this call right now, and, you know, in the next couple of days or over the next couple of weeks, people are asking you about getting a test or getting, you know, an appointment for the vaccine, tell them these four numbers are on our website. Call these numbers. Our staff's there. We will take your information down. If we can't answer the question right away, we'll call you back. And then if you're not eligible, if you're 64, you know, if you're not eligible yet, still call. We'll take your number down. We'll put you on our list, and when you become eligible, we'll call you then, so. But like I said, we don't, you know, we don't have your number unless you call us. So if you're listening, spread the news about these numbers. We want to be able to get, you know, as many people appointments as, as possible. And the same thing for testing. So the other update I have tonight is, you know, for testing, we're really, we're gonna be shifting over to Project Beacon on the Winway for our primary testing site, which is doing another phenomenal job. The point, getting an appointment is extremely easy, but we will also help you do that, too. So if you, if you're looking for a test, a COVID test, whether you, you know, traveled or were with a group or, you know, for some reason need to get a test, feel like you just want to get a test because you don't feel well. If you don't know how, it's, the link is on our website, or if you just simply Google Project Beacon, Winway, or Lynn Mass, COVID testing, you'll find it. But otherwise, if you call these numbers, we'll help you get an appointment as well.
So Tony, are we going to continue testing in town?
Unfortunately, no, we have to, we have to put a pause on that. Number one, economically for Cataldo, a certain amount of tests have to come through there on, on an hourly basis. And the last four days that we've had it, we haven't really been meeting that, that threshold. And number two, we've, we've used all the funding that we have, even the money that we went into the reserve fund for. We've expended all of that at this point, so now we're really pushing people, you know, we're only, we were only getting about 30 people. So, you know, now we're gonna be pushing people towards Project Beacon on the Winway.
Where is that? Where is it located?
It is right off of, you know where the, the Berry Terminal is?
On Blossom Street.
Blossom Street.
Okay.
Right by the Dunkin' Donuts, you take that, coming in, coming inbound, take, take the right at Dunkin' Donuts and it'll finish right, right to the site. In many, in many ways, it's a lot easier going there, and I've been there several times myself, than it is waiting in line in the hot. I've been, I think, the Beacon three times, and I've never had to wait more than five minutes.
That's great.
Yeah, so it's pretty good. All right, anything else on this, Tony? John, I see you on, anything from the, from the health officer?
Well, I would, uh, I would like to remind folks that Governor Baker's Order Number 63, which was issued February 4th, effective February 8th, increased capacities from 25% to 40% for restaurants and close-contact personal services. However, the gathering sizes stay at maximum of 10 indoors and 25 outdoors. And it's good to remember that these, these restrictions, these, these numbers are very dynamic. The governor attempts to have restrictions based on, on the current numbers in the trends. So when people ask me how, how things should go in, or how things should look in a couple of months, or in the summer, or, or at any time, I, I tell them, sure, take a look at the numbers. But decisions are made not just on raw numbers, but the trends. And unfortunately, we are still not in a position to be able to predict how things will look for gathering sizes or capacities for, for groups. But folks can contact me and folks can submit plans for any gatherings they may have in, in the near future. And I will look at them and I will advise based on the state mandated regulations at that time.
Great, thanks, John. Thanks team for everything. Go ahead, Tony.
I just also wanted to, two quick other things I wanted to thank. Linda Peterson, Diane Monti, Kristen Taylor, and Kim Koschleke, they're the ones that are on the phones. They're the ones that are, you know, constantly surfing the, the internet. And I know a number of friends of the Council on Aging are helping out as well, so, you know, the credit goes to them. They're doing all the work. I also want to thank the City of Lynn, their public health, the, the Health Center over there, you know, and, and everybody that's involved with the clinic. Because, you know, without them in that partnership, it, it isn't going as smooth. And, and just lastly, that the clinic is looking, constantly looking to increase its staffing amounts. So I'm actually getting job descriptions for clinic, you know, clinician staff and non-clinician staff, so administrative help. And it, it is paid, you know, it is a paid position. We will get those descriptions posted onto our website. For anybody that's interested in, has extra time, wants to get involved, you know, that, that we could throw, well, you can apply through the directions on those job descriptions and, and we'll get you on the list. So we are looking, we're constantly looking for more staffing assistance over there, too.
Yeah, Tony. Yeah, uh, Tony, uh, the people who are going over there staffing, should they be vaccinated?
They will get, yes. So to work there, uh, you have to be vaccinated. So, uh, they'll, they'll get a vaccination, you know, when they go.
Okay, great. Again, thanks, team. Um, hopefully there's a, uh, there's light at the end of this tunnel. So keep up the good work. We really appreciate it. All right, there's some opening comments, water sewer bills, motor vehicle excise taxes due March first. With the parking ban is still in effect, uh, remains in effect until, again, the winter, March twentieth, from twelve AM to six AM. CPC, um, is accepting grants, Community Preservation Committee is accepting grant applications. They do by March twelfth. You can send applications to, you can find the applications online and you can send them, uh, into, uh, Christian Taylor. At, uh, K Taylor at the hat.org. I'll just drop them off. Nomination papers for candidates running for town offices and committees are due to the town clerk on, by, um, by March fourth. Well, lucky I got mine in before that, so. I did, I did submit my papers for a re-nomination. Okay, uh, new business. Um, we have a few, uh, lobster trap storage leases to, um.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I, I just also would mention, I don't know if any of the other, uh, selectmen have anything, but we are putting a, um. A parking ban out today for the snowstorm that we're currently having. So I think that Chief Dwyer, um. Think that's going out any minute now, right?
Yeah, it went out, Tony, already. I just got the calls and the texts. So it's going to start tonight at twelve PM. It's going to run through the night until tomorrow, twelve, uh, twelve PM. This is a, it's kind of tough to predict this storm, but we just want to be ready for it. So, uh, DPW can get out and, and clean the streets up. So at nine PM tonight, there's going to be a parking ban in place.
All right. Thank you, Chief. And before we leave comments, Josh, Jean, any co- opening comments?
No, I have none.
Just, um, just to reiterate, reiterate, excuse me, reiterate, reiterate your, uh, comment on the CPC applications. Let's, uh, remind people that anybody can, um, submit those, those applications. It's a good opportunity. To, to get funding for, um. Anything that the, you know, applicable categories. Any, uh, projects that fit the, um, required categories.
Great. Okay, new business. Um, we have some lobster trap storage leases to authorize.
You had, uh, Brian, so it should be Bill and Brian Mahoney. There, uh, two, two, uh, different leases that should be approved.
Um, I'll, I'll move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the following twenty-twenty-one lobster trap leases. As presented in further that the release of said leases are subject to payment of outstanding fees, fines and payment. To the town of the heart to Bill Mahoney and Brian Mahoney.
I'll second that. Do we need a motion for that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor?
Josh, enter my.
Jean, can't the eye?
Mark, Colin and I. Um, we have some board of selectmen minutes from February fourth.
Do that. I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the board of selectmen meeting minutes from February fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor?
Josh, enter my.
Jean, can't the eye?
Mark, Colin and I. Now, uh, we have some, um. Approve, uh, approve some appointments from the town administrator. So Tony, why don't you take over on this, you and the chief?
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, also I'll, I'll say a couple of words and then I will let Chief Dwyer take it from there and, um. Timmy Furlong's on, on here too. I see him, uh, allow him a, a couple of seconds to, uh, to say a few words if that's okay with you. You know, this is a, i- it's a bittersweet moment. It is very exciting. Uh, but, you know, obviously it comes with the, with the departure of current Chief Dwyer. Uh, luckily not until, uh, the end of July, but, um, you know, we, uh, Timmy Furlong is, is, um. Actually been with the department for, uh, many years up until about the last year, just, just the last year. And we have a, we actually have a vacant roster position, uh, on the department with the departing, with the departure of Officer Noah Clark back in January. So, um, this, uh, the stars have aligned in our favor as a community here. We're able to bring Timmy back on. Um, fill that roster spot and he gets, so while he also works a shift, he's also getting this. You know, uh, five month lead time of experience working with Chief Dwyer, even though he already has for, for years on end. But, um, really getting ready for the next role as chief of the police department. So, um. I couldn't be happier. I know Chief Dwyer couldn't be happier. I know the department down there is happy. We are extremely, um, excited and, um. Thankful that, uh, Timmy's, uh, taken on this next chapter of his career. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll pass the mic over to Chief Dwyer.
Uh, thank you, Tony. Um, yeah, I'm looking forward, the biggest, my, the biggest decision while to retire was make sure that I, I. Put the police department in the proper hands. Somebody that understands the town, the people. Um, that understands the day-to-day operation of the police department. Uh, I met with the union in reference to this prior to going to Tony. I wanted to make sure where everybody was comfortable with what I. Um, my plan was, and then I spoke with Tony and, 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 uh, um, we had a conversation. As far as I'm concerned, this is an internal hire. Yeah, Timmy did depart for one year and which I look at as chalked up his experience and went to the big city. I'm sure he gained a lot of experience there. Timmy's been working under me, I should say with me for the past, um, eleven years as chief, but, uh, his entire career from fifteen years. He worked with me on Midnight. He has a great work ethic. He knows that town. He knows the internal operations in the police department. Um, he knows what needs to be done in the summertime, the wintertime, just a lot of things that it's going to, it'd take me a, over a year and a half to train somebody from the outside coming in. So he holds, he holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He has close to twenty years of law enforcement experience. To includes five years with PB as a dispatcher in and around five years. He's a certified EMT. He's a sexual assault investigator, field training officer in the department. He's, he's trained all the officers that come through there. Under my watch since I've been the chief. He has detective training, street level narcotic investigations, uh, nine-one-one call taker. He's the BT coordinator. I can go on and on and on. He knows the, uh, the LTCs. Um, we issue, uh, licensing and when I took over. You know, him and I, we had to learn that process. We went to school, um, training on it and he's one of my primary. Uh, people that we use for, uh, LTC renewals. He's a certified CPR and AED instructor. So it just tells you, and that's only a piece, uh, of the amount of. The investment that the town put into Timmy Furlong. And it was tough for me to let, let him to go, but at the time, I, I can't promise anybody anything. Uh, when, when it was time for him to decide to make a move. And I understood it and I would never hold anybody back to go over and see what's on the other side. Um, he's a, he's a great officer. He's a great asset for the police department. Not only I, the entire police department. The officers are looking forward to this. I don't know, I don't think they want to get rid of me that quick, but, um, I think they're looking. Um, I think they're looking for, for, um, you know, the next chapter and I am too, and I'm excited. For the town, uh, for the selectmen, for the town administrator. To, I'm going to be comfortable walking out of there, um, June thirtieth to say, okay, we, we have, we have the right person in place. So.
Whoa, 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 July thirtieth.
Yeah, July thirty.
July thirty-first.
Yeah.
July thirty-first.
Maybe the thirty-first, but that lands on a Sunday or a Saturday or whatever. So I don't want to come back to the weekend. So. Um, but thank you for your support. I want to thank everybody for the support and, uh, I'm looking forward to. Uh, getting back to the day-to-day with Tim. Um, this is going to be a, uh. Um, fairly easy transition, uh, because, you know, he knows the town. So I just got to, we just got to go over some budget issues, obviously. And, you know, just the, uh, administrative end of it, which he knows a lot of it, but we'll, we'll bring him along very quickly. Um, I'm not concerned, uh, about his ability to catch on. So thank you for your support and I'm looking forward to this. Um, not looking forward to retiring, but looking forward to the next chapter of the Haup Police Department. I'm very comfortable with it. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Timmy, would you like to say a few words?
Uh, sure. I, first of all, thank you to everybody. I am just absolutely humbled and floored by this opportunity. Chief Dwyer, thank you. Uh, Town Administrator Tony, thank you to the Board of Selectmen for, uh, considering me and I'm just. I, I, I don't want to hold up anyone's time here, but I am just. Over the moon about this opportunity. Um, very excited to look, uh, coming back and, and, and working with Chief Dwyer. As, as, as most of you know, I served the town for thirteen years as a police officer and I, I'm, uh, just very excited about this. And, uh, I can't wait to, to come back and, and work with Chief Dwyer again and, and hit the ground running. I just, uh. Great opportunity that I, I just couldn't pass up. Um, my family and I are very excited for this opportunity for me to come back to the town.
That's great, John. Uh, Tim, uh, let me make a motion, then we can open it for discussion, um, Jean and Josh. I move that the, that the Board of Selectmen approve the appointment of Timothy Furlong to the Haup Police Department as Police Chief. Effective August first, two thousand twenty-one, and to rejoin the Haup Police Department as an interim patrolman.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion. Tim, I just want to say, um, it's good to see you come back and, and I want to just emphasize what Chief Dwyer had said. You know, so as, as Town Administrator for many years, I was always frustrated, you know. Bringing people on, uh, early in their careers, training them, educating them, and then only to see them leave, um. Um, to, you know, other places. I'm not going to say better, but bigger perhaps generally. Um, and it's good to see, um, that the resources we put into you are coming back, um, to the town. So, so that's, that's really good. You know, you and I have spent a lot of time together over the years. Uh, I know your work ethic. I know, um. Your ability as a, as a police officer, um, and I look forward to, um, to working with you in the future. I do want to say something, Chief. Last time you said, um, you know, you were just a link kid, um, coming over to the happy and the chief. I want you guys to know that you guys weren't the first link kid to come over to the heart. Um, there was another guy that was a link kid that came over, uh, as patrolman and then also became chief. And, and that was my father. So. So he was the first link kid, I think. So.
All right. Thought I was, so, but I'll let him trump you. He was a good man.
Okay, uh, Josh?
Uh, well, I mean, uh, there's a great testimonial from, uh, Chief Dwyer and, uh, in Chief Dwyer's trust. So, uh, we're putting our trust in you now.
Thank you very much.
Tim, this is Jean. Uh, yeah, I don't really know you that well. In a sense, that's probably a good thing, huh? But, uh, really I've heard nothing but good and, and I welcome you on board.
Thank you very much.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. No further discussion. All in favor?
Josh, enter my.
Jean, can't the eye?
My color and I. Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Now we have another approval that we have to make. Uh, and this is to fire department. So go ahead, Tom.
Um, so again, uh, we also, um, Chief Palumbo's on the, on his, uh, on the call here as well. Um, you know, again, bittersweet, you know, with, with, uh, Chief Palumbo retiring at the end of this fiscal year. Uh, we'll be needing to replace, um, him with a full-time firefighter. And we, uh, here we have, uh, Stephen Scaglioni on, on the call as well. Um, he's been a call firefighter for many years. Um, I know he's excited to jump on here. He, uh, has been at the top of the civil service list for multiple years in a row. Um, interviewed really well and, um, we're excited to offer him the position effective July one. Uh, this is a conditional offer. He still has to go through, um, you know, his, uh, PAT and physical and, and, um. Background check and the, and the full-time fire academy, uh, but this will be an effective date of July one. So. Uh, another exciting, uh, you know, bittersweet with, um, you know, a- again, a lot of institutional knowledge, uh, going out the door. Uh, but, you know, excellent candidate coming in right behind it, um, and sure to be, you know, with us for a long time. So. Uh, Chief Palumbo, do you want to say anything?
Uh, yes. Uh, I'd just like to say, you know, I was, it was a very, very nice opportunity. For me to be able to be the chief of the department and I'm glad that I was able to perform the duties. And I think, uh, your replacement. That's coming in is, uh, young, eager. Like you said, he, he was very, very good in the interview. Uh, I think he'll be an asset to the town. And I know how he feels. Thirty-three years ago, I felt the same way when I got this job. So. Uh, I think he's a great choice.
Thank you, Chief. And, um.
I'd like to welcome them to the department.
Thank you, Chief. Um, and Steve, I know you're on. I don't know if you're unmuted, if you want to say a couple of words.
Hey, how's it going? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, how's it going? I, uh, thank you, Tony. Thank you, Chief. I just want to, uh, I'm very excited for this opportunity. I've, uh, been on the call department since twenty thirteen. I've been trying to get on and it finally opened up for me and, uh, I'm super excited to get started. It's a dream come true. Very excited. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Steve.
Josh and Jane, could I have a motion? Open to the discussion?
Yes, you can. Uh, I move that the board of selectmen approve the appointment of Steve Scaglioni, Stephen Scaglioni. To the Haup Fire Department as firefighter effective July first, twenty twenty-one.
Seconded.
Motion remained and seconded, discussion. Uh, well, welcome aboard, Steve. But before I get to you. Uh, and I, I'm sure I'll have another opportunity to Chief Palumbo, but, uh, Dean, you know, you, a well-deserved retirement for you too, coming up. You've been through a lot. Um, both you and, uh, Chief Dwyer, um, have served this town so well over the, so many years. I remember the time when I came in and they joined the, um, the public safety and had the, uh, police department down at the fire department. That was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
But, um, but, uh, Dean, uh, I'm sure we'll have some more opportunities over the next months to, uh, wish you a, a, a nice retirement. But I appreciate all that you've done for this town.
Thank you very much. Like I said, it was a pleasure.
Um, you, you've done well. Um, so. Uh, Steve, uh, welcome aboard. I know your father and your uncle very well. I grew up with them. Uh. Great family. Um, so I'm sure they're very proud of you, um, stepping in. I know your father was a, um. Was a call firefighter for a lot of years. Uh, God, probably over twenty years. So he knows what it's like, um. To wait in line, I guess, sometimes, but, um, I'm sure he's very proud of you now and.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Glad it worked out for you, Stephen.
Thank you.
And, uh, you look a little older than when you were on the Hot Red Sox, but, uh.
Yeah. Good times.
You still remember those days.
Oh, absolutely.
Hey, Steve, like Mark, I know your family very well and you come from a great family. And, uh, I just, I'd like to welcome you on board as well.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate, appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Josh, enter my.
Jean, can't the eye?
Mark, Colin and I. Okay. Back here, get back to the agenda here. Okay, let's see. Okay, now we're getting nothing sad. I mean, this is a lot of turnover going on here.
I know, I know. I don't, I'm, I'm, I.
This is killing me.
Promise, they all promised me that it's got nothing to do with me, but I'm starting to, uh. Every department head meeting, every department head meeting comes with another announcement. I don't know if I'm going to have them anymore. But, you know, so Linda Peterson, our Council on Aging Director, um, has announced her retirement. And I asked her to be on tonight's call because, um, you know, you know, once again, you know, when, when you're in. you know, when you're an employee for the town in the hot, like, it's more than just a job. And Linda, you know, just like Chief Dwyer, just like Chief Palumbo, you know, lives and breathes the Council on Aging, and it's more than just a position for her. And she's taken that program tenfold what it was when she walked in the door. I know that. And, you know, like even, even just with the COVID hotline and the, and the, and the stuff that we've been going through in this past year, where, you know, so many of our seniors are dependent on that opportunity to get together at the Council on Aging and take advantage of the program she puts together. And, you know, they've been kept apart because of this pandemic, which is, you know, has been a real struggle. But Linda has, you know, is calling them every single day. Her and Ann are down there calling them every day. The lunch meals haven't stopped. For one day, they haven't stopped. And now with the, with the COVID hotline, you know, for the seniors that weren't calling, she knows them by name, by first name. She knows their phone numbers off the top of her head. She's calling them and getting them appointments, saying, where are you? Why haven't you called me yet? We got to get you in there, get you shot. You know, that type of, that type of, you know, employee in a community like ours is just, you know, just goes way beyond the job for her. And so, you know, we're going to miss Linda tremendously, and I just wanted to invite her on here to say a few words and for you, the Selectmen, to say a few words too.
Thank you so much, Tony, for those kind words. You know that I told you I didn't want to speak because I would cry, because this is a very sad moment. But I really had some 12 years of joy working at the Council on Aging. And Mark, thank you for hiring me back 12 years ago, because it has been the best 12 years of my work career. Working with the town, the seniors of Naht has brought a lot of joy to my life. Sadness, yes, but more joy than the sadness. And I will miss everybody. I hope to leave it, like Chief Dwyer was saying, leaving it with Timmy. It's an awesome thing. I love that. And I hope to do the same thing, to leave it with somebody that will carry it into the next 12 years. I'm working on that and hope at another future meeting I can announce that person. And, but I just want to thank everybody. This has been a really great 12 years of my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. You brought the Council on Aging up to a completely different level, as Tony had said, Linda. I couldn't imagine when I first appointed you back over 12 years ago, that you would have brought it to the height that you have. Everybody who is involved in the Council on Aging just loves everything that you've done. The only thing is my mother gets a little frustrated sometimes. She tries to get on Zoom and does her exercises, but.
I know. I do too. I do too, believe me.
But it's been a pleasure to see everything that you've done for the Council on Aging and for the town. And much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I know there's a lot more to it than just the lunches, but, you know, in pre-COVID, my wife was making, helping make desserts, and every day she'd come back with stories.
Alan, Alan, yeah.
You know, the, you know, the luncheons the folks would have, and it's, you know, it's clear how important that is to the fabric of our community, especially for seniors who might not, you know, have family at home. So just a big part of making the, not just a town, but a community. So thanks a lot, Linda.
Thank you very much, Josh.
Hey, Linda, Gene, just like to say, thanks for paving the road for such a successful, successful program. You've done a great job up there.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I say something? Linda, you know, as far as the flu clinics go, over the years, Linda's always put a little team together to help make our flu clinic so successful. And this year, because of COVID, and we had to do our first ever drive-through flu clinic.
That was crazy.
Again, right? The call went into effect for flu shots and made it perfect, perfect. You know, there was so much anxiety before that clinic, and it went off like a dream. And it was, you know, it was the cooperation again from Linda and her team that made it so successful. So we're going to miss you, Linda. Thank you, Debbie. I'll be seeing you on the golf course, though. I hope so.
So, Mr. Chairman, we do have, we do, we have posted Linda's position on our website. For anybody interested in applying, please send your resumes and letters of interest to kristin taylor@ktaylor@nahat.org. And then as we receive those, we will be working with the Board of Directors and Linda to, you know, filter through those resumes, and hopefully we'll be making an appointment sometime soon so they can work with Linda and learn the ropes, and it's a smooth transition.
Great. I look forward to it.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Linda.
Okay, ongoing business. We need to vote to approve some adjustments to the FY22 budget, Tony.
Yes. So we have a few budget adjustments to make to the last budget that you approved at the last meeting. There's four changes here. I'll just explain them quickly, and then if you guys can just motion, you know, as presented, you should have them in your packet. Under Library, the longevity line item, we made a mistake there. So we had it in for 225. It should be 495.
Do we have to open the warrant first?
This, these are budget adjustments, so these ones are just, if you guys want to just motion to approve, you know, these adjustments as presented, that'll be fine. And then the next one will open the warrant, and then I'll get into that. If you want to make the motion, and then I can do this in discussion.
Sure. Go ahead, Josh.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the FY2022 budget adjustments as presented and send to the Advisory and Finance Committee for their ongoing review.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion, Tony, go ahead.
All right. So like you said, the first one is under the library budget, under longevity. We had made a mistake there with our calculation on longevity. So it was previously at 225. It should be at 495. We have two employees there receiving longevity, starting this year, and we missed one. So we're making that change. Under Recreation, we failed to include an adjustment here because of the increase in minimum wage. And honestly, I kind of slipped under the radar because we didn't have park leave last summer due to COVID. So we're making the adjustment here to increase their, increase the part-time wages total from $3,000, $3,090 to $3,152. So that's, again, that's to account for the increase in minimum wage. Water Sewer Enterprise Fund, we got our MWRA assessment, preliminary assessment. So this could change later on, but our preliminary assessment here is 5,000. Actually, let me get the actual number. 5,535,673. So this is what we're charged from MWRA for water. This is a, this represents a 4.1% increase as compared to last year. So in the original budget that we voted, we had 515,906, so we're increasing that to account for this additional increase in the assessment. For those of you on the phone or on the call or listening at home, last year we saw a 12.5% increase. Our DPW, our crew down the DPW, did a tremendous job, a tremendous job over this past year with leak detection and making fixes in our water system. So by doing so, we actually reduced a ton of unnecessary volume, which helped with this increase being so low. Comparatively to the other communities that are water-only customers, the rest of them are looking at 9.3% increase, 10.7, 13.2, 16.6, 19, and 23.5. So we're by far doing the best compared to the other communities in our, in our category. And a lot of that's basically because of COVID. The way that the cost for MWRA is spread amongst all the communities that are tied in with them is based on volume. And so Boston volume has gone down tremendously because of COVID. People are at home. Less water being used in the city, more water being used in the suburbs. So our slice of the pie has increased, but 4.1% is a victory for us. It's a great, it's not a bad assessment. So we're accounting that into this budget adjustment. Also, Rubbish Enterprise Fund, we're, you know, in talks with Waste Management right now about contracts. And I'll get into that later in the Town Administrator Report, you know, the different things that we are looking at in that contract. But we actually were budgeting a little high in the first, in the first budget that you voted on at 455,000. We're bringing that down to 445,000 because of the way, the different negotiation things that we're doing with Waste Management. We're getting a better rate than we estimated originally. So that's also good news. So for total, the variance between these four changes, the variance between the old budget and what you're about to change, about to vote on is actually 5,546 less than what you've already approved.
I like those changes. Any further discussion on the motion? Having known all of favor?
Josh, answer mine.
Gene, Kathy, I.
Mark, Tony and I. We have a motion to open the annual town meeting warrant.
I move that the Board of Selectmen open the May 15, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant as presented for supplemental of articles of all town boards, committees, personnel, and the public for consideration of placement onto the annual town meeting warrant.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. Go ahead, Tony.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen so you can see the change here. Essentially, we had a placeholder in Article Number 13 for the revolving, the revolving funds that we'd like to create for CONCOM and ZBA. Let me share my screen. And Dan Scrip, you're on the call here.
Yep.
I'll let you explain, you know, kind of what this article's doing, if you don't mind.
Not at all. The Modern Municipal Modern, the Municipal Modernization Act a few years ago allowed us to create bylaws that helps us develop a fund for town agencies that provide some form of a service to the town without the need to renew that fund every year. So this is actually a bylaw change that we initiated back in 2019, and now we're just adding to it. What's that? I thought someone said something. Already existing is the Council on Aging Revolving Fund and the Cemetery Revolving Fund. But now we're adding to that two more revolving funds, one for the Board of Appeals and one for the CONCOM. And I believe that the theory behind that is their activities have increased quite a bit. So it's been a bit of an issue trying to correctly appropriate the funds that they need to do their job essentially. So these funds tie in the fees that they collect from applicants and whatnot to the services that they need to provide moving forward. We have spending limits there of 10,000 and 20,000 for the moment. We're waiting for more information from the Board of Appeals and the CONCOM to make sure that that spending limitation is appropriate. So we may have to change that number going forward, but for now, it's, that's where it is. Now, and even if we do allow 10,000, 10,000 and 20,000, the Selectmen, together with the FINCOM, can increase that spending limit. And I should point out that this does not come from the tax levy. It only comes from the fees and expenses that are collected by, in this case, the CONCOM and the Board of Appeals.
So for the Board of Appeals and Conservation Commission, there'll be, the funding will be reduced from the general fund?
No, it comes, it comes from the fees that they collect. So right now, the fees that they collect go to the general fund, but that's not going to be the case moving forward.
Yeah, well, no, but, Mr. Chairman, correct. So we don't have that in there this year because, you know, that's dependent on this passing. Right. So typically, you know, without this passing, we actually, we appropriate a certain amount for each of these committees to use towards, you know, notice requirements, meeting notices, paper, you know, a butter notices, professional services, different costs of that nature. But actually, again, somewhat of a COVID impact, because so many of our meetings are done by Zoom, and therefore the meeting notices gained an extra 20 lines of information of how to participate. The cost of an advertisement in the paper has gone through the roof. So they, ZBA is actually already expended, I think, all of their appropriation for the current fiscal year. So we are, you know, looking to make this change. It would, like, like Dan said, with this, with the yes vote on this, it would essentially be application fees paid for by people looking for an appeal or a CONCOM permit. We'd go into this revolving fund, and then those, that, those boards, and that board and that commission would be able to use those fee money in the same fiscal year for expenses like meeting notices or professional services.
Tony, what are the, what are the average fee receipts for each board been over the last couple of years? Do we have a number?
I think we have a four, we have, I think our ZBA application is a $400 fee. Is that correct, Dan?
I believe that's true. They may have increased recently due to the increased cost of their activities, but it's right around there.
But what you said. What I'm asking is, of the fees collected, how does that compare to the $10,000 and $20,000 we're talking about putting in that?
Yeah, we're looking into that, Gene. We just don't know right now. I'm waiting to get back some information from both of those boards to make sure that those numbers are as accurate as possible.
Okay, I was just curious.
No, it's a good question. That's very important.
And the spending limit, so if ZBA collected $20,000, the spending limit caps on how much they can spend out of it in that fiscal year.
What happens if they, if they need to spend more than this limit?
And the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM can increase the spending limit on their own, jointly, increase the limit without.
Requires a vote, a vote of the Board of Selectmen and the FINCOM. But what I was going to say, Gene, is that a typical notice in the paper that used to cost maybe $150 is now close to 400. So that's caused, that's, that's caused the ZBA to use up their funds, their appropriated funds a lot faster than typical. That may not continue. Once we get through COVID or meeting in person, you know, the, the, the cost of the advertising comes down a bit, but it still makes sense, right? You have no idea at the beginning of a fiscal year how many appeals you're going to get or how many CONCOM permit applications you're going to get in that upcoming year. So having it be self-sufficient, you know, makes, it's good financial sense.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. So that's the only change. We still have a couple of articles. Uh, so that's the only change. We still have a couple um articles here that uh Dan and I are working on language. Uh, that we'll be presenting to you, uh, but that's the only change that we're presenting to you tonight.
That's good. Um, okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Josh, head from my.
Jean, can't the eye.
My color and I. We have a vote to close the warrant?
I moved. Go ahead.
I G.
No, go ahead.
I move the board of selectmen vote to accept and close the annual town meeting warrant as presented and send it to the advisory and finance committee to being taking positions with the understanding that ongoing review will occur by the board of selectmen, that modifications may occur at a later date.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor?
Josh, head from my.
Jean, can't the eye.
My color and I. Well, on, we're still on ongoing business. We have one more item. Vote to approve seasonal tent operation extension request at Ocean View. Tony, wanna discuss this?
Yes, um, and I believe someone, someone is Allison, are you on for?
Yeah, hello.
How you doing, Allison?
Good, how are you?
The, so the back, good, thank you. Uh, so the background of this is um Ocean View uh puts a seasonal tent up. They actually have approval from the board of selectmen. It's been agreed upon into their lease that they get to use, uh, put the tent up from essentially uh March to May and then October to um January. And it allows them to expand their seasonal use of their outdoor patio uh portion of their um property. What wasn't originally envisioned was the coronavirus and the limits that it's been, that it's put on their business. So much like many other um businesses in town, they've looked to utilize their outdoor space to be able to continue to do, to do business there. And essentially, they have folks um reaching out now to book uh weddings for the summer. And last summer, we approved this. We allowed it, um, we, the ocean view came in front of you, the board, and asked to basically allow him to have the tent up uh from May to October, uh, as well as his already approved amount of time. Um, so essentially it works out from March to January now. Um, because if the indoor space uh is limited by the state regulations, he's able to adjust and move them outside. Um, so that's pretty much the background and the request. Allison, did I, did I capture it all? Do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, that's pretty much everything. Um, you know, the hard part is our, our guidance is ten people right now indoors, and we want to make sure that we can celebrate safely with everyone and with the, the guidance for outdoor events being so much better than indoor. Um, that's the reason we're looking to be able to keep the tent for at least until we uh don't need it anymore with COVID. Hopefully that goes away soon.
Yeah.
Okay, um, but discussion, we have a motion, so we never discussion.
Move that the board's like, and vote to grant the ocean views request for a seasonal tent operation extension from the second week in May twenty twenty-one to the third week in October twenty twenty-one.
Seconded.
Made, made seconded discussion. Uh, um, go ahead, Josh.
So what we approved last year ago went from March to May and um, and then from October to first week of January. So now it's essentially to, it would be till January of twenty twenty-two essentially, right? Is that right, Allison?
Correct.
And um, does the frame never comes down, right? It's just the canvas that comes down.
Yes, the canvas comes down between the, after the first weekend in January through the third weekend in March, the canvas come down, the structure stays up. Um, typically, the structure entirely would come down during the summer months.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, okay. All right, I understand.
Yeah, um, thanks, Josh. Um, I know that it was up a lot last year and I don't, Tony, I don't think we had any complaints about it, did we?
None at all.
Yeah, so I'm glad we could try to help out in any way. I know everyone's struggling to COVID and especially businesses and anything we can do to help you along, you know, we're glad to help, so. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Josh, head from my.
Jean, can't the eye.
My color and I. Okay, thanks, hi Allison, for joining us.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you on behalf of, you know, Mike and the ocean view. We're, you know, we're really grateful to be a part of this community and for your support for our business. And it's such a lifeline to be able to have the tent and be able to, you know, continue to celebrate as much as possible with everyone that we can.
That's great. Hope to see you down there soon.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Bye bye.
Thank you all.
Okay, um, deserving his point, continuing discussion. Um, letter sent to Ralph Martin, Northeastern General Counsel for the Board of Selectmen. I, I just want to say that we did receive a response from Mr. Martin in Northeastern. Um, it's being reviewed by council and hopefully at our next meeting, we can report on ever further discussion about it. Uh, Josh, you wanna, any, any other further comment on this?
No.
Jane?
No, I'll wait till it gets uh reviewed.
Okay, great.
Also, uh, I, I don't know if you wanna, uh, last night was Concom, the Conservation Commission met last night, and they hired, uh, they voted uh to hire a um.
Peer review, yeah.
A peer reviewer uh with EcoTech, I think was the, was the, was the, was the company name, so. It's longer.
Yeah, sounds like a good company, so good.
Just, um, so the audience knows that that consulting firm is paid for by Northeastern, not by the Hunter, the Concom. As required by law.
Paid for by Northeastern, it works for the town. Right. Thanks.
And would, you, Mark, was it two separate OIs?
Yes, there are. There was one for the water intake and one for the building.
Okay, and the consultant is for both?
Yes, I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, on to. Go ahead.
Mark, was there a vote on the tent motion? I may have missed it. Was there an actual vote? Okay, I'm sorry that I missed it. My bad. Sorry.
Time administrator, you put.
Um, so we, uh, not on my list is a quick report, um, commending the DPW on uh quickly assessing a minor sewer break on the Fox Hill, lower Fox Hill Road area tonight. I know that they got that fixed very quickly and they're probably out plowing now. So, um, of course, similar to the last snowstorm we had, um, you know, it's always tough when we have utility issues, you know, same time as a snowstorm, but when it rains or when it snows, or when it rains, it pours, it snows, it breaks. Uh, so, um, commend the DPW. Um, I know, I think National Grid's still there now, working on a gas main uh repair. Um, and Fox Hill Road is still shut down, um, and residents are, um, have been asked to conserve water temporarily. Um, but as soon as I get an update that it's all clear, uh, we'll put an update out to the residents that, um, they don't need to continue to do that.
Tony, um, sorry to interrupt, but um, I just thought it was worth pointing out that, um, that sewer break was a result of the National Grid work. They, they hit the pipe. It wasn't uh the pipe failing like some of the other failures were bad, right?
Right, this is a, it's a plastic uh pipe there. It's not, um, you know, this isn't the main, you know, it's not just a natural uh break. This is actually because of other work happening in the ground there. Uh, they, they caught the sewer main and, and broke it. I mean, it's, it, it happens. It's normal. It's pretty, uh, things are pretty close together under there, so. Um, but yeah, that's, that's basically what happened. They're in there repairing a um, a uh phase two type leak, uh, uh, gas leak in the road and during excavation hit our pipe.
Thanks. All right.
Um, so I wanted to give an update on waste management, uh, contract negotiations and, you know, what we're looking at, uh, moving forward. Um, as I've talked about many times in these meetings, uh, you know, the cost of um, of waste and recycling has increased dramatically, um, nationally, not just here. Um, a lot of that has to do with, um, the limits on exporting our trash nationally to certain countries. So what used to be a commodity in, um, an actual money-making uh industry, it's now the opposite. Uh, so everyone, all of our, you know, neighboring communities and across the country are dealing with hikes in uh trash rates. So we are, we actually signed a one-year deal last year because of the uh, the volatility in the recycling market, and we didn't feel it was uh appropriate to enter a long-term contract. Um, the rates have actually, and it's good that we didn't because the recycling rates have improved. So we're getting a better recycling rate. Um, the, the, the bad news is because, again, I, I'm sick of saying because of COVID, but again, um, because of that, our tonnage has gone way up. Uh, so if you've, any of you have noticed, your cardboard accumulation at home is gone, is, is gone now because, you know, naturally people are home, producing more trash at home and plus a lot of people are, um, you know, ordering online and things are being delivered right to their homes. So cardboard's way up and cardboard has almost, you know, the, some of the worst uh uh recycling value as a recycled product, so, um, our current, our current, um, total, you know, estimated total assessment from waste management is four hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. Um, what we're looking at is if we were to do no change whatsoever, um, the original proposal to us uh, for a five-year contract, so no change in how we collect um, or how much we, or, you know, limiting the amount of trash or limiting, or, you know, um, doing recycling every other week or things like that. If we were to leave it exactly the way that we currently handle our trash, um, that assessment would look at a um, four point one four percent increase, so seventeen thousand dollar increase. That works out to about, um, that works out to right now, uh, single-family home gets about three hundred and fifty-one dollars per uh, per household for their trash rate. That would work out to closer towards, you know, three seventy-five, three eighty. Um, so what we were trying to look at, how could we bring that down? Um, unfortunately, the only way to do that really significantly would be to switch to an uniform barrel automated collection, limited amount of trash with recycling being picked up every other week. Dramatic change to how we currently are used to uh handling our trash. And that would result in actually a savings. It was basically net neutral, but a lot of savings of about three hundred dollars on our total assessment. So we're kind of caught in the middle of how can we, you know, maybe capture some of those savings without presenting a huge major change to the residents. Um, so where we are right now is talking about a uniformed, uh, uniform barrel on the recycling side, still allowing folks to, you know, a lot of the feedback we got was people would be willing to pay a little bit more so long as they're able to put as much trash out as they, as they, as they, as they can, not be limited on the trash side. But environmental benefits of having the uniform barrels that are, are sturdy, so the sixty-four gallon with the lid and the wheels, um, especially for recycling, you know, reduces pollution dramatically because it's bagless. And right now, most people just put it in an open barrel or a tub. So on collection day, it's all over the place. Um, so where we're headed right now is a, um, is purchasing, so we may need a, a warrant article utilizing some of our retained earnings in our uh rubbish enterprise account. Plus a grant of sixteen dollars per recycling cart or tote uh from DEP uh to purchase all new recycling barrels for our residents. So that would be a sixty-four gallon, you know, heavy-duty tote that you're, you typically see like on the side of the road in Lynn or in Salem, uh, that, you know, allows us to cap, potentially capture an automated collection, which is less labor, which is less cost. We don't capture that as much on the, on the trash side. So we'll be somewhere in between the two numbers I talked about, but still better as we voted earlier tonight, um, than what we were estimating. So uh, my hope is that I, I'm looking into, I have a quote from uh Cascade for about fifty thousand dollars for the recycling totes with the grant from DEP. If we're able to, if we're able to accomplish that, we could almost cut that down uh to, you know, forty grand or thirty-five grand. Um, and we have money in our retained earnings that we can spend on that and give everybody in town a nice new free recycling bin uh for their recycling.
Tony?
Yes.
Are, are those costs now split between recycling and regular trash?
Uh, well, you get one, you get one bill that's all in. But our contract, we have a different rate per ton for recycling and a diff, than we do for regular trash.
Okay.
Hey, Tony, um, so I look forward to, um, seeing what comes out of this, but if I understand this correctly, um, you're suggesting maybe we have the same sort of collection system, but with, on the recycling side, have a sixty-four gallon um, recycling barrel that's free of charge to all of the residents. Uh, on the trash side, it remains as is. There's no limitation um, in terms of how much trash you could put in or what you put it in or anything like that. And if that was the case, then we're probably looking at about a twenty-five dollar per year increase.
Right, so our final contract, uh, you know, what our final contract ends up being, we'll get bigged into the enterprise budget and then we'll, then we'll figure out how that um gets distributed amongst all the ratepayers and what that ultimate rate is, but estimated somewhere around twenty-five dollars. Uh, so you're talking about, you know, versus a potential fifty-dollar increase. But, you know, on the other hand, you don't have, you're not limited on trash, which I know that's a, that's an issue. A lot of folks that we spoke with, you know, or that we've uh talked with through, um, you know, after changing how we distribute the cost of trash, changing the rate structure. A lot of the folks we talked to, you know, expressed the point that they would, you know, um, they enjoyed not being limited on how much trash they put out. But, you know, the environmental, for, the other big thing we hear about is pollution. And like I said, a lot of that comes from recycling on collection day uh because it's an o, open tote. The other beauty um of the tote is we can actually throw a, you know, educational sticker right on the inside of that lid that reminds someone every single time they go out there what can and can't go in the barrel, which allows us to save on potential contamination penalties uh on our recycling. So it also, you know, it, it gives us the opportunity to get used to these barrels. And if we so choose to move our trash into a similar system and try to collect, you know, those additional savings, we have that, you know, cost-saving um lever to pull in the future, should we want to. So it keeps us with waste management, it ties us into a five-year contract. People would get a little bit of an increase, but they still get to do as much trash they want and they get a nice. People would get a little bit of an increase, but they still get to do as much trash they want and they get a nice sixty-four gallon recycling tote. And we have cost-saving, you know, levers to pull in the future should we want to do that.
Will will what goes in those barrels be the same as it is now?
Yes. Yes.
Well, just to put it in reference, too, I just bought one of those um recycling um barrels at Home Depot and it cost me fifty-eight dollars.
You didn't, you didn't uh recycle the receipt, I hope.
Oh, well, I sure waited. Okay. All right, look forward to that. Um Josh or Jane, any other comments on trash?
No. None here.
I know Tony's looked at this every which way, every possible scenario, so thanks for doing a thorough job on that, Tony.
You're welcome.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we have um lots of citizens forum. Tony, how do you want to do this?
Um let me take a look at the chat here. Uh we did have a question earlier on about um about testing uh here in town. So again, just to reiterate that. Uh there there unfortunately, there will no longer be uh testing available on Saturdays at St. Thomas. But there's testing available every single day at Project Beacon. And if you go to our website, you can follow the links there to schedule an appointment. Um or if you call any of the four numbers that we put up, uh we're happy to help you um make an appointment that way. And, you know, should we um see a higher demand for testing and to get um additional funding through grants? We may be able to bring that back um into town, but for now, uh we're gonna, you know, push push it over to Project Beacon, which is doing a great job. Um. We also have um, okay, Ken Corangelo is first on my list here. Ken, are you um, are you still on? Ken, you're, it says you're unmuted, but I can't hear you. Um he said he typed in that he was having some issues. Um his question, which was typed into the chat, was um. Could the Board of Selectmen discuss the eminent domain warrant article and explain the intent of having. Uh the entire twenty-plus acres included in that language?
Sure, I can take a stab at that. Um. Uh as Ken should probably know, being on the FinCom for a number of years, he was. That articles on the town warrant are nothing more than placeholders. Uh what what counts is the motion that's read at at town meeting and. As as members of the FinCom in the board understand that when we place an article in in the warrant, it's nothing more than a placeholder. Um so the the generic article that's in the town warrant under eminent domain includes all twenty acres. Clearly, that's probably not going to be the case when we get to town meeting. Uh you know, this takes a lot of legal review. Our intent is to take it, i- i- is to take a. Conservation easement over a portion of those twenty acres. Right now, it's looking at about twelve acres, maybe a little lot larger. Um but what we put in there is, again, the intent is to take a conservation easement over a portion of. Of um East Point. And as we get closer to town meeting and our our council looks at the motions that will be read at town meeting. Uh we'll have a better definition of what that will be. Uh Josh or Jane, any any further comment on that?
No, I think that's a good explanation.
Okay.
Uh next is uh Vi, uh Paddock.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Vi.
You're all doing well. Um so I have two two comments um with respect to trash. Um the compost, there's a composting service that services in the hot, we only have one that actually services in the hot right now. And it comes to two dollars a week. And we found that it's brought our trash down by fifty percent. So composting can dramatically reduce your trash. It's it's a very uh wet, a lot of the trash that you. Throw out is wet, like if you cut up a head of cauliflower or whatever, you know, like there's a whole bunch of leftover stuff or your bones and the meat or fat. So I think might be nice to encourage people to consider composting. Um you can do composting in your backyard. I tried it, but it's a little bit. Heavy work and so this service is good. The other um.
Is that Black Earth?
Black Earth Compost, yeah. BlackEarthCompost.com if you all are interested. Um Swim has been encouraging people to to uh. It would be less expensive. If we get a hundred people, we have about thirty people, I think, now in town. If we get to a hundred people, the price drops dramatically. Um and it's servicing um uh Salem. It's pretty massive up there at Marblehead. It's a, it's a, it's a company that's started out with nothing and has really grown because this is a big need. They turn all of this into soil. They have a place that does this and they manage it properly. And then um you can buy this compost by the bag and put it in your garden and you also, you get a bag. As part of your, as a reward for participating in the program, so. I would encourage the uh Board of Selectmen to to think about pushing this a little bit. Um maybe there are other companies out there. I don't want to just be pushing one company, but it's the only companies it's serving right now. Um the other thing is, I see that you're going into executive session to talk about the golf course. Um I don't know any of the particulars of it. But I do encourage you, um especially everybody involved in swim and the environment to. Try and get some good standards for golf course management with respect to fertilizers, artificial fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, insecticides. Um and try and get that documented to protect um our children and our golfers from walking poisons or whatever. Um and manage our golf course in a a thoughtful way.
We'll do that. Uh I know we've discussed some of that with a new management firm down there, so we'll continue that by. Once we, once we get the lease signed, we'll we'll be able to be full on that.
Yes, super. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Um thanks for bringing up the golf course, Vi. I just, you know, I know that there's been some um chatter on social media asking for updates with the lease, you know, we are. Uh I'll just say that, you know, we can't really um disclose the specifics, but we've been in. Tremendous, you know, communication back and forth with uh the attorneys of the selected uh lease party. And the Board of Selectmen and our attorneys, so uh we're hoping, you know, we're hoping to come to a final um, you know, signature on that contract. Uh very shortly.
Yeah.
So um, you know, it's been a good, it's been a good conversation back and forth. And uh we're, you know, we're we're certainly working hard to get them back up and running. Um. Uh you know, get the place back open for the community as soon as possible.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
Um I have another direct message, but it's, there's no name on it. It's just all zeros. Uh I'll ask you to unmute. And it's about, it's about the trash. It's about um trash these, so. You know, I, the 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 person's asking me to read their question, um because they're on another Zoom, but there's no name here. I don't really feel comfortable. But I'll 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 read it anyway, so it's, I don't know who's writing this, but the comment is. Um all the people uh that like the one fee for unlimited trash is because they're paying the single-family fee. Us mul- multiply families, or I think it's supposed to say multi-families, are paying double with less trash. There really needs to be a review on how this trash bill is distributed. Um you know, the the change that we made this past year um was to. Try to distribute the cost of trash more equitably. So for many, many, many years, uh multifamily homes. Were being charged a single-family rate, the same as single-family homes. Um and what we did was, if you have a two-family, a three-family, a four-family, you're getting charged a little bit more. Um because naturally it's a multi, we were trying to charge it per unit instead of simply per parcel. Um so, you know, that change effectively um. You know, by by distributing that more equitably, um it allowed us to suppress some of the increase of the of the, you know. The cost that I was speaking about during the town administrator report. So I I hope I answered your question. I understand that it uh, I understand that as a multifamily uh building, it's it's. A sudden change to how much you pay for trash. It should be per unit, should be paying a trash bill. Uh that was the intent of the of the change. And we have uh an abatement form that you can fill out if um you feel that we are inappropriately. Um applying that charge. So we did get a number of those uh from people who said, you know, we haven't been a two-family. Um building in years. Uh so then we connect you with the assessor, you make that change and then um. And that's how, you know, and then we, and then we go from there. Then you get an approved abatement, so.
Yeah, this, Tony, there's no really easy way of doing this. I think you you've got the fairest way possible. I've over the years seen it. Done other ways. Um. Uh I think it has to be a per-unit basis. There are single-family homes that have ten people in that, in their family, and there are. Single-family homes that have four people in their family and we can't be adjusting the rates depending on how big your family size is. Uh but we can adjust it. It should be per-unit cost. Now, there was a time when we tried to base it on per person. Uh and that was an administrative nightmare. Uh in in the result, the result of that was people were dropping off the census list. In order to prevent from paying for per-person cost. I mean, we had like a four or five percent decrease in population. After the trash bills went out. So uh, you know, there's no easy way of doing this. I think a per-unit uh basis is, is a way. To go about it. You put an abatement clause in there that I think um that people could look at, particularly seniors, for example. Uh who aren't producing a lot of waste, but are paying the same unit uh price as a family of six. Uh so. You're trying to do the best you can and, you know, not everybody's going to be happy, but uh I think.
Yeah, with with trash, it trash isn't metered like water, you know, and 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 so the only way to to really. Charge someone based on how much trash they produce is to go full-on into a pay-as-you-throw system. Where you have to buy a special bag that, you know, only trash in that special bag would be collected by the by the uh contractor. It's a nightmare. It's a nightmare. No, so the way you try to do, the way you try to do trash is you as a, you know, you try to estimate it. Based on how much uh, you know, we looked at, we looked very long and thoroughly through. Uh how much to, you know, mathematically split the cost based on a per-unit basis and how many, what's the average amount of people in a one-family home? Here compared to, you know, uh Massachusetts and the county, you know, we looked at a lot of different stuff and tried to nail it down to the closest number possible. Um like I said, in the future, you know, maybe we go into a pay-as-you-throw. Um or we go into, you know, uniform barrels of some sort, but, you know, I know that the 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 the. The special bag is a nightmare. I think homeowners, you know, relatively speaking, you you're still per unit. You are less than a dollar a day, so.
Let me just add also, Tony, that the the annual fee that you're paying for rubbish. Is not only curbside pickup, includes all of the trash we're picking up off the beaches and our barrels that DPW is throwing. It includes a compost area, so there's a lot more to it than just curbside pickup.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um anything else, citizen forum?
Uh I I have nothing else unless somebody, you know, if you haven't, uh if you want to unmute yourself, uh if anybody on the phone here wants to unmute themselves and announce their name and address, they're willing to. Do that.
I see Kathy Martin there. Welcome back, Kathy Martin. Suppose you missed the FinCom, huh? Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. Um, okay, we're gonna go to executive session.
Yes.
So I'll, uh, see, I gotta read that, right?
Yes, you need to declare that um, well, Dan, can you walk us through it?
Sure. The chair needs to declare that in order to protect the bargaining position of the town and these various issues, executive session is required. The reasons stated in the um in the agenda there. You can say so declared if you want.
Sort of clear. I got second on the motion.
Seconded.
Mo- motions remain seconded. Any further discussion? We will not be coming back into regular session. All in favor?
Josh, Andrew, my.
King Candy, I.
Not calling. Yeah. Should I read this?
Yeah, that'd be the better thing to do.
In accordance with Master General Law Chapter Thirty-Eighth, Section Twenty-One. A three to discuss impending litigation regarding Play It, Play It As It Lies, Inc. And in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Six, to consider the lease. Of the Kelly, of Kelly Green's golf course to R and B management in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Two. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with the town administrator. Okay, Tony, are we staying on this Zoom call? We got another one to follow.
Uh we're gonna stay on here. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna um respectfully kick everybody out and um have a great weekend, stay warm. See y'all at the next meeting.
We're back.
Okay, um.
Tell Mike to set the bathroom door.
We're no long. We're no longer live streaming. Uh we are uh, we're on our own here. Um I'm gonna also stop the recording as well.